All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of the members. Can we change things?
Chairman Kelly.
Present.
Legislator Quagmire Bush.
Present.
Legislator Diamond.
Present.
Legislator Weitz.
Present.
Legislator Maniac.
Here.
Legislator De Chessy.
Here.
Legislator Wheeler.
Here.
Legislator Isabelle.
Here.
Legislator Brutal.
Here.
All right, now let's stand for the pledge and remain standing for a moment of silence for Fido Dandriano, who was City Ward Supervisor from 1986 to 1999 and served as chairman in '91. Uh, John?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the best will, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any public comment tonight? Anybody wishing to address the legislature? Hearing none, we'll move right along, and we have a presentation from our photographers, Mark Perpetti Photography and Kim Fonda of Eyes on You Photography. They're presenting our portraits for the 2014 Montgomery County Legislature.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for giving me a few minutes of your time here. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Mark Perpetti from Mark Perpetti Photography, and this is Kimberly with a Y, Fonda from Eyes on You Photography. Two days before Christmas, I got an email from Andrew Santolo from Madison Court's office asking me to take a few pictures, followed by a phone call from Cheryl Reese. I always asked him to help me with the bigger jobs, and a good thing I did, because it turned into quite the adventure. It was a lot more than I thought it would be. Over the last couple of months, I've met numerous people, had a lot of fun. I hope the friendships can continue. It's been quite the project, probably one of the biggest things I've done, and I'm really, really proud of it, and I'm glad Kim, who was pretty much the brains of the whole project, was on board with this. A few times, I remember her saying to me, "What did you get me into?" They thought we worked at Michael's. We went up so many times for the frame, they almost put us on the payroll. The payroll up there. It was changed a few times, but I hope the finished project is what everybody hoped for. I was told it's history, because it was the first year of this, so... You want to say anything? You good?
I wrote your speech.
You want us to hold it up a little bit? Does anybody have any questions? Thank you again. It was fun.
Good job.
Thank you. I was going to say, "I'll stay away from this." Just so as everybody knows, I have a work request in. It'll be hung up underneath the back.
Moving on, is there any communication?
I put everything on your desks. There's an invitation there for the employee who's retiring.
Next, I'll look for approval of the previous minutes. Barbara?
Second.
Tom? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Next is the acceptance of budgetary transfers. Has everyone looked at those? Accepted those?
Yep.
And acceptance of the procurement record.
Need a motion?
We need a motion? You're accepting it? So why are we just... Tom, Barb, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Next, I'll look for a motion to accept the procurement record. Second, Barb, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? All right. Old business. Is there any old business to come before? Okay, hearing's done. We'll move right along into new business, and I'll entertain a motion to amend the order of resolutions, seeing as to we have an attorney here to address us the resolution that's originally slated for the last... Barbara?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, with that, we have a resolution authorizing the county executive to sign stipulation settlement agreement, Kimberly L. Patterson versus Montgomery County Sanitary District One and the Village of Neleston sponsored by Wheeler and Diamond.
First, I'd like to thank you, the opportunity to come and talk to you. Appreciate being invited to be here. I did watch the meeting minutes of the Budget and Finance Committee from last week, and I think, Mr. De Chessy, your comments were well taken about the resolution, and that you didn't have any support or backup prior to that meeting upon which to make a decision. I want to let you know that the resolution that you were given during that meeting is not the resolution that was requested by the chairman at the sanitary district meeting to prepare and submit to the county clerk, the county legislative clerk. I submitted that resolution to the clerk on February 6th, and it contained language that is different from the language in the resolution that you were looking at, and it also had attached to it all of the documentation that you needed in order to make an informed decision regarding that settlement. So if you have not seen the exhibit that was attached to the resolution, which included the entire stipulation and settlement agreement, the map of the area that's in question, and the releases that we intend to get from the other parties, then that's something that you ought to look at before you make any decisions on that motion tonight. Have you had a chance? Has this board seen the entire resolution?
Yeah, I did get to see Exhibit 8. I didn't want to interrupt you, but I do have some questions regarding the apportionment...
Regarding the what?
The apportionment of the cost.
Okay, fine. Well, this is the resolution that I sent to the county clerk, county legislative clerk, which included all this documentation, and it's not... This is the version that I sent if anybody wants to see it. It had some important language that was removed from the resolution that you were presented with, most notably that you had actually reviewed the stipulation and settlement agreement, and that you approved it. So you were being asked to approve a resolution without even looking at what the stipulation of the settlement was or what the terms were. So that was improper, and I think you were right to change that. I thought it would be useful if we gave a little background to this case, because most of the people sitting here tonight haven't been involved since 2009 like I have been involved in this case. I was asked to represent the county and the county sanitary district in February 2009, when the litigation was commenced in January 2009. Now, one of the questions that I understood came up last time was, what is the relationship between the sanitary district and the county? The sanitary district is an administrative unit of the county that was established by a local law adopted by the county in 1972 to create the sanitary district, and it was given certain specific powers. It doesn't have all the powers that the county has. The specific powers that were granted to the sanitary district were to acquire real property for the purposes of putting in the sanitary sewer systems and the pump stations, but it was never given the power to convey away assets that it had acquired. So, tied to a 1.87 acre parcel of land was acquired by the district in the village of Neleston for sanitary district purposes. After the plant was built and after the lines were laid, the sanitary district, on its own, operating on its own, without any authority from the county, entered into a lease and then entered into a sale of that property to someone by the name of Cruz, who for years operated a junkyard, salvage yard on that property. Notwithstanding the fact that the county sanitary district gave this deed to the land, since they didn't have the power to do that, it was annul it, it was void. Just, yeah?
Can I see those differences between what you sent and the difference between our chairman and our attorney wanted us to do?
Sure.
Thank you.
Here is... I won't give you the attachments.
That's fine.
This is the whole thing.
The resolution you did and the resolution from our side?
Sure.
Thank you.
Here's the resolution. Does anybody else want to add?
This is the resolution you did.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. Now, you want the one that the county... You have the one that you had last time, right?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Do you want to know the differences? Want to see where the differences are? I can point them out to you.
Chair, just to verify, the resolution that was sent over by Mr. Ayers is the one that was emailed out by Cheryl today, correct?
It's the last two wheres on page two that were changed that are the significant changes. So if I can go back to 1989, the county conveys away... Excuse me, the county sanitary district thinks it conveys away title to the land, but the land was never conveyed away because I never had the power to do it. Okay? The county... The land is an asset of the county. One of your questions is, why is the county in this lawsuit? The sanitary district as an administrative unit acquired the land for county sanitary district purposes. It is an asset, that land is an asset of the county. So what's involved here is a county asset. Let me just talk about the litigation for a minute. The litigation, Mrs. Patterson claims ownership of that 1.87 acres of land in Neleston by virtue of the deed from Cruz. So the sanitary district improperly gives a deed to Cruz. Cruz in 2004 gives a deed to Mrs. Patterson, to the same parcel of land, 1.87 acres of land. Mrs. Patterson acknowledges that she knew the county had sanitary district facilities and a building on the property, and she knew that there were title questions raised by her own attorney about whether or not this was something that they could actually acquire. Patterson starts the litigation in 2009, January 2009. I get hired in February 2009. The litigation asks for rent, past rent, from 2004 to 2009 in the amount of $100,000. It also says that since they own the land and the county is improperly using and on Mrs. Patterson's land, she wants $2,000 a month rent forever moving forward, and that $2,000 a month rent included an escalation clause, which would have that rent go up every year in the future. When I was involved in February 2009, the plaintiffs filed an answer to her complaint that disputed her claim of title based on the fact that the district could not convey away a county asset, and demanded rent for their use and occupancy of the county's property. So the sanitary district now again had no power to convey to Cruz. So what's at issue here in this lawsuit is a very important concept. What part of the county has the sovereign power to convey away county assets? If this was not contested by the county, the sanitary district could sell any asset it had to anybody without going through all of the statutory protections to protect the property and assets of the county. And if the county sanitary district can do that, well, then maybe the highway department can do that, and maybe somebody else can do it as well. So the county government never gets a chance to use and rely on the protections that are in the state law to keep it from losing assets through mismanagement or just not paying attention to who has the power to do what. Now, as Mr. Landen said last time, one of the other reasons why the county is involved is because the plaintiff, Mrs. Patterson, says, "Well, the county officials engaged in certain actions that ratified the sale." Well, what were those actions? The county legislature, prior to the county board of supervisors, passed the budget based on revenues, based on taxation of that property to Mrs. Patterson, and based on the tax mapping department mapping it as partly owned by the county and partly owned by Mrs. Patterson. That has been rejected, by the way. One thing that has been lost in this lawsuit is that the county defendants, as I said, have put in a claim that says, "Well, if we own it, you owe us rent, $2,000 a month." For 10 years so far, from 2004 to 2014, $2,000 a month, 12 months a year for 10 years, is $240,000 that we're leaving on the table and walking away from. The plaintiffs respond to us by saying, "If they are not the owners of the property, if the county is right, that the county still has title to this property, then over the years that we have been there," Mrs. Patterson says, "we have made improvements to this property, and we are entitled to be paid for the improvements that we've made to this property while we've been here, because otherwise the county is unjustly enriched by our efforts." Now, here's the problem. They can't make a claim for unjust enrichment until they are ejected from the property. They haven't been ejected from the property. They're still in possession. That's what part of the lawsuit is about, getting back the property and getting them out. They tried to amend their lawsuit to bring this claim in to this lawsuit, and after we objected to it on a motion, they withdrew their claim because they knew they couldn't make the claim stick in this lawsuit. Nevertheless, as a part of this lawsuit, in an effort to avoid having a second lawsuit with these same parties, we tried to address all of those potential claims that they would have for unjust enrichment to the improvements to the property. What improvements did they make? Like I said, it was used for 10 years or more as a junkyard. So there were tires, scrap metal, scrap vehicles, there was junk everywhere. That property was cleaned up, that stuff was supposedly removed pursuant to a DEC consent order, and so that's what their claim is. They also said that we took down a building that was decrepit, and we improved one building that was there left standing, and we put a new roof on it. They claim, Patterson claims, that she has spent well over $250,000 to improve that property. And yet, when we asked during discovery for an appraisal of the property, how much is the property worth today, now after you've improved it, her appraisal comes back for Now, what wise businessman spends $300,000 to improve a piece of property to be of value of $54,000? The other thing that you need to know is that when Cruz had this property under a lease and then under a reputed deed from the district, they had all this junk there, and they extended the junk further west than the property lines. So some of the improvement work that Patterson has requested to be reimbursed for, to recover, is for work that was done not on county property, but west of county property. In fact, they testified that they thought it was 60% of the work that they did wasn't even on the county property. It was on the property lying west of here. So, in February 2009, I made a recommendation about how we should deal with this lawsuit. That lawsuit was, with that said, and I have it here with me if anybody wants to see it, it said they'd made a substantial claim for a substantial amount of money. They're not going to go away until they get some money. If we don't want to pay them any money for these claims, which I believe are not meritless, they are meritless, they have no value, they cannot be sustained, then we should move for some rejudgment right now. Not even get involved in this lawsuit. Move to dismiss their claim before this lawsuit even gets started. That advice was rejected in February 2009, and we then entered into a series of negotiations...
Rejected by whom? All three entities involved?
The idea was we are going to try to get into discovery. We're going to answer the complaint. We put in an answer, has 27 affirmative defenses, and has several counterclaims, one, as I told you, for $240,000. We then enter into a phase of discovery where we get all kinds of information that talks about, in one important respect, the lack of proof of any improvements to the property, but in the other respect, we get into a series of negotiations. One of the things I said in February 2009 was, "We can't negotiate with this, these people, they're going to want money, and if we're not willing to pay them money, we should just move to get the case thrown out." So what do we do? We spend 2011 substantial amount of time negotiating a settlement, that we get to the end, and we have an agreement, we have a memorandum of understanding, and then the other side red flags on it. In 2012, we do the same thing. In 2014, we're back after we make a motion for summary judgment. We also spent some time during the same period of time making motions to protect the district's employees who have to go every day on this property to get to the pump station, to make reports and handle the materials and to inspect the machinery there. We had situations where employees of the district were being physically threatened by the people on site, Mrs. Patterson's people on site. We had to go to court and get an order of protection on that. Then there were instances where the road was blocked with junk machinery here and there, and we were not allowed... A gate that's not even owned by the plaintiffs was locked, we were not allowed access, we had to go to court to get access for our people again. The third time, they claimed that a bulldozer was broken down in the driveway, and that was blocked again. Three times we went to get access to the property during this period of time. In the last settlement attempt in 2012, we had reached a sort of a settlement where they were going to take $125,000, and we were going to get back certain things, such as indemnification for environmental claims, all contractors who had done work were going to give releases, and et cetera. That fell apart in 2012. And then, finally, in the spring of 2013, I was authorized to make the motion that I originally wanted to make in February 2009. And that motion then wound its way through the court system, and we got a decision in July of 2014. The court decision in July of 2014, what we asked for was partial summary judgment. We asked the judge, "Just decide the question of who owns the property." Because once we know who owns the property, then we know who has what rights, and the case will go away. The judge decided, and I'm going to sort of quote from his decision, "That the real property transferred by the district to Cruz was done in violation of county law and was therefore void and invalid." The court held that the plaintiff, however, has a right to have a trial so that he has an opportunity to show that what the value of the improvements he made to the property were, and whether or not the county has been unjustly enriched by these improvements. Now, just remember a second here. The idea of value added to the property is a claim that can't exist in this lawsuit. It has to wait till we eject the tenant, and then it has to start a new lawsuit. So there really is no claim for improvements. We are allowing that to be part of our negotiations because we want to stop this now, so we don't have a second lawsuit with these same people. There was a question last time about, is this settlement time sensitive? And here's why it's time sensitive. The judge ruled that we have this case now, that we're going to have a trial, and he's going to take some more testimony on who has title and make a final decision on who has title. And he's also going to try to balance, how much is the county benefited by the improvements made by Mrs. Patterson, and how much money do we owe them for that? Okay? The county filed an appeal of the decision, because what we're doing is mixing apples and oranges. These are two separate and unrelated claims. Why are we mushing them together? It's not really part of the lawsuit. We filed an appeal in August of 2014. That appeal has to be perfected, which means all of the paperwork has to be submitted and filed in Albany at the appellate level by May 2015. So we have to get a decision on what we're going to do, either settle or go forward with the appeal and a trial in sufficient time before May 2015 in order to be able to give me time to finish the paperwork. Let's talk now about the terms of the settlement, that is, in that packet that was submitted, okay? In that settlement, I want you to be clear that what we are doing in that settlement is not paying for or settling for the improvements that have been made, and there's a reason for that. Let me come back to that when I get to the end. First thing that this settlement says, it says that title to the land is held by the district. It doesn't say we're buying the land from Mrs. Patterson. It says, "We own it by a right," and that's an acknowledgement that they agreed to. Mrs. Patterson, however, agrees to give the district a quick claim deed so that we can cut off any potential claims by someone that she might transfer the deed to, so we don't have Mr. Smith coming up five years from now saying, "Hey, I got a deed from Patterson." Who got a deed from Cruz? Who got a deed from the district? So that's what cuts that off. Patterson is required to get out of the premises by March 30th of this year and leave the premises free and clear of all the junk that she has on it. The county defendants agreed to pay the plaintiffs $250,000. The parties agreed to exchange releases so that they can never sue us again on these same items, these same causes of action, and claims that they have for improvement and things like that. But this settlement agreement does not include something called an indemnification for third-party claims. What we know is that plaintiff has not expended a nickel for any of the improvements that she alleges to have done on the property. She hired contractors to do work. There are at least $296,000 of contract work that was done on this property alleged by the plaintiff that they have never paid the contractors for. Those contractors' claims are out here. Does this settlement cut off those claims so that those claimants can never make a claim against the county? The answer is no. We asked in our settlement, we want a release from all the contractors who did work. Plaintiff says, "Can't give it to you." We want an indemnification from you, plaintiff, that says that if any of these contractors come after the county defendants, you will stand up and pay these people. You won't do it. There's also the issue of environmental cleanup. This cleanup that was done on this site was done under a DEC consent order. We have no... We want to make sure that in the event that there's some problem environmentally on this site, that we can go back to the plaintiff, who was supposed to clean it up, and say, "You didn't clean it up, we want you to help contribute to the cost of cleaning it up." Absolutely refuse. Absolutely refused. That's not part of the settlement. So I have to ask you, what are we getting for $250,000? We're getting a settlement of plaintiff's claims, Mr. Burthold's claims, where he claims that he has done over $100,000 personally valued of property. And we're getting title, cleared title to our own land. We are not getting rid of $296,000 of third-party claims that are potentially out there. And we're not getting rid of any, we're not getting any contribution toward any environmental cleanup that may come in the future. What's the status of these third-party claims? Maybe they're not real. Two of the contractors have filed mechanic's claims against Mrs. Patterson, saying, hey, I did work on it. It was your property. You told me you owned it. I want to be paid. You haven't paid me. As of yesterday, when I checked, those mechanic's claims have not been discharged, which means that they haven't been paid or the court hasn't thrown them out as being untimely or some other way deficient or defective. Those claims are still there, out there. So, where does that leave us? This leaves us with a settlement where a plaintiff, payment of a plaintiff of $250,000 does not bar any third-party claims. It puts us in a position of being in the potential where if you think, well, I'm paying for the claims with this $250,000, that you're going to pay plaintiff $250,000 for the improvements. And then you're on the risk of these third-party contractors coming in and saying, how did improvements on your property? And I want to be paid $296,000. Potentially, we'll pay twice for the same thing because we're not getting any contribution, we're not getting any indemnification or anything from the plaintiff. The plaintiff's own appraisal says, okay, we're getting the land back. Great. We're getting the land back. $54,000 is all it's worth. So we're paying $250 for a $50,000 piece of property. We're not, we have some exposures and we always would have some exposure for environmental cleanup. But under this settlement, we cannot look to plaintiff for any contribution to help pay for it. We don't believe that the plaintiff can prove any of these value of these improvements. Finally, I would say to you that the cost to litigate this case out all the way and the cost to pay, let's say, $54,000, the value of the land is less than the $250,000 settlement. And we would still have claims by contractors. We'd still have environmental issues.
You mean from this point forward?
From this point forward. We're still going to have, even if we litigate it out and we win, we still have the potential for environmental issues in the future having to be addressed. We still have the potential for contractors coming forward and saying, you owe me money because I did work on your land. I thought it was Mrs. Patterson's land, but now it's your land. I'm coming after you. And we can defend against those. I'm not saying that we can't defend against them, but it would be... But we're not in a situation where we're paying, A, $250,000 thinking we're getting rid of claims and then having to defend against these claims a second time from a different party.